All right, good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday, January 16th meeting. I will have our city clerk do a roll call.
Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trin.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Rochino Farrell.
Here.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Trin, will you lead us in the pledge, please? And I'll have Deputy Mayor Howe read our land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically this Noqalmi Indian tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. Next up, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great. So next up, we have public comment, and we will start in the room. Thank you. And I just want to remind, on the agenda, it looked a little squished together. It almost looked like the Sahali project corridor project was a public hearing, but it is not. So if you do have a comment on that, please do it now during public comment. So first up, I have Ramya. Yes, you can just step up to the podium, and the mic should be on. It will be a green light, and then you'll have three minutes.
Sorry about that. I put my name there. This is my first time attending the meeting, so I'm just here to be present and see what's happening. Sorry about that.
No, no problem. Thank you so much for being here. All right, we have the ByteBunnies Robotics Team.
Hello, City Council. We are sixth graders from Pine Lake Middle School. I'm Chloe.
And I'm Ada.
We are recognizing, we are representing a team ByteBunny, an all-girls robotics team, an all-girls robotics team. We won a Champions Award in our, in the first FLL Robotics game of the season last December.
We've shared our passion for robotics with students in all age groups from many other schools, and at events like library workshops, international rights, and many more. We'll volunteer at the upcoming Central Washington University Semamish Lunar New Year Celebration on February 10th. We want to invite all of you to this exciting event. Hopefully, you can visit our booth supporting STEM. We'll be demonstrating the very first Lunar New Year robot there as well.
Since the following day of this celebration is February 11th, which is also known as the International Day of Women and Girls in STEM in science, we have submitted a proclamation, a plaque, application, and in the name of February Champ is officially known as Girls in STEM Day in Semamish. It is to acknowledge the contribution of our local STEM female professionals and encourage girls, girls in, to sign in STEM. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Yes, I will say, I know we have received that proclamation, so I believe it is on our tentative list, so thank you for coming. Please bring extra ears next time. All right, Sayed.
Honorable, honorable mayor, excuse me, members of the council, I'm here making some comments about the Sahali corridor study. What you see, I sent an email last night to kind of summarize the issues and the topics and, and what, in my opinion, what needs to be done or advised council as far as the action that you can take. What you see is in front of you is our examples of some short-term improvement that can be done. These are creative thinking, so to speak, ideas that your consultant can look into it as far as short-term improvement at the two intersections. Overall, the, when you look at the corridor, we're talking about a two-mile corridor, there are three intersections that basically control the traffic flow. These are 202, 37th Way, and Inglewood Hill Drive. And when you look at this, if you, if you're able to solve and address the congestion and a safety problem at this intersection, you could easily address the current concurrency, safety, and the capacity improvement. And let me zero in on the two intersections. At 37th, what you see is a, two exhibits. On the left is existing condition, one lane in each direction with dedicated left turn lane. But creative thinking put me in a position to look at the possibility of adding a, basically a free-flow northbound, which is a P car congestion point, can be done with some channelization and relatively inexpensive way of dealing with that congestion at the intersection. The second one is at the Inglewood Hill Drive, and as you look at the intersections, there's three legs of the intersection, the, the south leg, the east leg, and the west leg, they're fully developed. The north leg, you have two lanes, but in the northbound direction, but quickly, one lane drops off. So my suggestion actually to continue that, it looks like, based on my observation, it looks like that you do have, you may not even have to buy the right-of-way. Basically, you continue, you have to make some modification to the sidewalk. So these are examples of short-term improvement. I'm not, I don't want to kind of leave the impression with council that I'm against looking at long-term plan. I'm simply offering some suggestions that can be incorporated in part of the overall plan.
Great, thank you so much. And I know we do have responses to your questions as well for later on, so thank you. Mary?
Good evening, council. This is Mary Wichter, Semamish, 23 years. I first wanted to speak on Sahali. I had also mailed something in during the last Planning Commission meeting on Thursday about all the different options that you should really have. I won't say that I went to all the Sahali meetings in the past, but I went to quite a number of them, and I certainly attended the important ones. And I very strongly remember that people were like, if you can't actually do something to fix the problems, don't spend any money doing stuff because you need to fix the problems. And I remember back at that time, it was like 14.3 million to do whatever it is that they were going to do that wasn't going to fix problems. So I'm a little bit, I feel trepidation when I see a $1 million, let's look at this with that, almost a $2.5 million, let's take it to 30% design on something that you probably can't even afford in the near term, and probably isn't going to fix anything. So I had met Sayed, I was at the council coffee where he passed out his sheets, and boy, there are just some things that really can be done on the ground pretty quick, not quick and dirty, like quick still study them and use your consultants or whoever you choose, that I think really, really would make the difference. And the people in the city that are vocal and don't like growth and think there's a lot of traffic, they even know that the traffic is really less than it used to be, and I think your traffic counts show that as well. So there are things that you should do on Sahali, and thank you for the city manager and all the wonderful staff for saying, it is the top priority, we need to do something. I just think the $1 million to $2.5 million is this big thing. Don't do that first. Break it into a little front piece where you look at the things Sayed and your consultants might look at, and actually do some things on the ground. Because I know even with the paving of 228th, and some of that was done with grant money, Sayed was able to work with some of the, the city staff to get those lanes so it's easier to get in and make the lefts. And I mean, he kind of did that out of the goodness of his own heart, you know, being in advocate and stuff, kind of like me up here at the microphone. So it's just, it's a lot of money, and it's a lot of time. And I went through all the meetings before, and the answer was, don't do anything unless you can do something that makes effect. And I guess the biggest thing to say is, Tom Odell, there used to be a traffic committee which had one to three council members on it, and it would meet with staff and public, like during the day, during the week. There were great things done by those. You should use committees again. And if you don't want to do any of them because you're fearful of them, like a finance committee, try the transportation transit one. People like Sayed might be able to attend. Other people, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I definitely drive around a lot, and I've been here a lot of times, so. I just, I was going to talk about, the other thing I sent was a note on Happy. It is the best stuff that I can give you guys in 10 years, and I waited about 10 years to give it to you. Came off a DVD. I took pictures of those, so there's the visual slides, some of the things he says, and some things I found on the internet. But boy, there's just a ton of really world-class ideas from somebody who's world-renowned in land use planning, so I hope you'll use some of those for the city. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Do I have anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign up? Yeah. Denise?
Oh, that's good, you know my name now. Yay. I'm Denise Steele Darnell at 2121 200th Avenue Southeast in Semamish, and I'm just following up on coming to the meeting last week, talking about the town center and the development, and I'm just trying to get the word out more that there's about, from what I've learned from the city and from researching, 280 acres of development possible land in Semamish left, 280 acres. The town center is slated to be about 120 acres of land. So if you're concerned, especially people from Pine Lake, thanks, that's so great you guys are here, and other students that maybe are listening tonight, that's a lot of development, and it's going to change Semamish forever. So I feel like I need to be someone that's coming and speaking about this before it's too late. And I know many of you are environmentalists on the council, and I voted for you for that reason, and so I'm hoping that we can have a say. It's not the developers that should get to say what they want. So when I was listening last week, they were telling us and telling you what kinds of buildings they were going to have, and you were sort of asking them, well, could it be this paint color, and could it be this? But I feel like we should get to determine, no, we only want this much, and this is how much land we want to be used. In looking back and from going to council members for many years, council meetings, I know originally it was allotted to be 750 dwellings. That was it. And to me, 750 is probably how much our whole area can handle, and I know there's a lot of talk about King County growth, but we are not required to have this many dwellings, 2,000 to 400, 4100 for the growth management rules. 750 was appreciated and accepted, so I just don't think it's wise what we're doing. And looking at this last week, and yesterday, and the day before with the freeze, people's pipes breaking, we cannot handle that many more people on the plateau with our services. Already, the last three days, fire, police, all the Puget Sound, the water people, they were stretched thin. And that's with how many people we have living in Semamish now. So we're creating a disaster for the future generations if we allow 2,000 to 4,000 more dwellings on the town center land that we're looking into now. The second thing I wanted to mention was the traffic study. I know I had heard that there hasn't been any studies since 2008, and that's why we're looking at having another person study. But in doing some research, I found that there actually was a study, 2021 to 2022 BLUMA, B-L-U-M-A-E-I-S, did an environmental study, and I'm worried that if there's a study done now, they are going to look at 2020 data. Am I beeped?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you so much. No, you're good.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I think we'll move to online if anyone signed up.
For the new reasonable accommodation, those who had pre-registered by 3 o'clock today, please raise your hand if you wish to give testimony. Okay, I'll unmute the first caller. Mr. Stickney?
Good evening, City Council, Paul Stickney, Semamish. I'm just going to speak to the email I sent in today on the Sahali Way issue. A couple of things that I think are missing or questions is, I think schools should be a part of this. How much school traffic uses that section of Sahali to pick up and drop off kids, and are there things that can be done over time to mitigate? Because as a whole, in my opinion, the largest issue of traffic congestion in Semamish is school pickup and drop-off, so I think that's important to be at least a part of this study. Another thing is that the Sahali Way 202 corridor and roundabout, I did some research recently, over the last week or so, looking back at all the meetings in 2018 and 19 that dealt with traffic and concurrency and related issues. And there were, out of 96 meetings that were held those two years, 55 of them and 81 agenda items dealt with this issue. The Washtot folks came and talked on June, let's see here, on June 4th of 2018 and July 10th of 2018, and had quite a lot of presentation materials on the July 10th meeting, well worth watching that Washtot presentation, because I think that roundabout could work extremely well, just like the one at Southeast 43rd, and he's like Semamish Parkway does. I do think the entire scope is potentially premature. I'm not going to read my whole comment, but if it goes forward, I just suggest that you have multiple land use alternatives, from one as low as having almost no new growth to currently adopted plan, to what some of the optimal numbers are, would be to meet Goldilocks housing for those living and working for lifetime and legacy in Semamish, and what would those impacts be if you decide to do the whole, the whole thing? And I've got a question. The traffic concurrency model was rewritten starting in 2019, and it used to be intersection only, and I believe it was rewritten to include corridors and segments. What I'm asking is, is the model that will be run to analyze Sahali corridor only, or is there some sort of form for volume and capacity? And all the rest in, of my comment is here, and that's, if anybody wants to meet and chat with me about the deep dive, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
And that was the last comment, fellow comment.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next up, we have executive session pending and potential litigation pursuit to RCW 42.30.110.1i. I do see 20 minutes slotted. Is that going to be good to start, Carrie?
I think to start, council can always extend.
Okay, great. So we will be back at 7:10. Thank you.
Also, council may take action.
Hello, council is going to extend executive session until 7:20. All right, welcome back, everybody. I'm going to pass it off to Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement with Sayo Group LLC, consistent with the recommendations of the city's outside legal counsel.
I will second that. All right, would you like to speak to that? Does anyone else have any questions or discussion? Oh, we don't have Councilmember Stewart back on. She might need to be promoted, sorry. Just a moment. All right, Councilmember Stewart, I don't know if you just heard the first motion? Okay, awesome. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, please continue.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement with Century Link QC, consistent with the recommendations of the city's outside legal counsel.
Second.
All right, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, last one.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign administrative settlements with Gary K. Billingsley, related to the Issicoff Falls City Road project for access easements in the amounts recommended by the city's right-of-way agent and staff. Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, thank you so much, Councilmember O'Farrell. Next up, we have consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to approve that.
Still moved?
Second.
All right, I don't see any hands, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right. Now we have our proclamations, and then one presentation and a training. So first up, we have Holocaust Remembrance Day.
Holocaust Remembrance Day, January 27th, 2024. Whereas the United Nations General Assembly designated January 27th the anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz-Burgenau as the International Holocaust Remembrance Day, and whereas the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systemic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazis, by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, Jews were the primary victims, 6 million Jews were murdered, Roma people, people with disabilities, and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons. Millions more, including gay men, Jehovah Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, including political distance, also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibility of individuals, societies, and governments, and whereas we, the people of the city of Semamish, should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust, and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, and rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom in a just society. And whereas Holocaust Remembrance Day has been set aside for the people of the city of Semamish to remember the victims of the Holocaust, as well as to reflect on the need for respect of all peoples. Now and therefore, Mayor Kayla Clark, on behalf of the city council, do proclaim January 27th as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in the city of Semamish, and recommit us to the promise that this never happens again by remembering the victims of the Holocaust and teaching our children about this tragedy.
Great, thank you. Next up is Black History Month for February.
This proclamation is in honor of Black History Month 2024. Whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson established the observance of African-American History Week to honor the contributions, achievements, and involvement of African-American people in the development of American democracy. And whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to recognize and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience dating back thousands of years, including some of the greatest, most advanced, and innovative societies that we can draw inspiration from. And whereas we must acknowledge and pay tribute to the generations of individuals who struggled with adversity, risked their lives for justice, fought a fight that at times seemed impossible to win, and to this day, to this very day, continue to fight for equality and generational wealth as part of the American dream. And whereas the month of February gives us a chance to honor the many heroes who are unknown and unnamed, yet they have contributed to the struggle for freedom and justice for all. And whereas the 2024 Black History Month theme focuses on African-Americans and the arts by highlighting the art of resistance and the artists who use their crafts to uplift the race while speaking truth to power and inspiring the nation. And whereas the legacy of Black history reflects the strength and resilience of the past, present, and future leaders, with the Black family remaining a fundamental unit for change and progress in today's society, and continuing to have a profound impact where each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunities for all. Now therefore, the Mayor Kayla Clark, on behalf of the Semamish City Council, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month. A special time to take the opportunity to become more knowledgeable about Black heritage and to honor the many Black leaders who played a part in the progress and the advancement of this culture.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next up, we have a presentation for our monthly council projects update with, it looks like Audrey and David Pyle.
All right, good evening, Mayor Clark, City Council. Good to see everyone, Happy New Year. I will go ahead and share my screen. Let's see here. All right, wonderful. I'm back tonight with the first major planning projects update for 2024. Audrey Starcy and I have teamed up and pulled together a presentation tracking the status of several projects that will continue throughout the year. It's going to be a busy year ahead. We are eager to get started with the public process for our major projects. Before we move to the calendar view for each project, I do want to make sure to highlight for the council that we have a new list of projects shown here. While the last few weeks have been relatively quiet without the normal policy project presentations to council that you've grown to love, rest assured, we will be back again this spring, and the past few weeks have been spent schooling up a new phase of policy work. As noted on the previous slide, we have concluded work on the city's vision, the Housing Diversification Toolkit, and the Climate Action Plan, and have added those to the Library of Policy Documents that help form the foundation of the comprehensive plan. Now, we are moving into a new phase, and while we continue to work on the comprehensive plan, we are also ramping up efforts on development of a transit plan, the critical areas update, the Transfer Development Rights Program, and the Town Center Plan and Development Regulations Amendments. These important efforts also help provide a foundation for the comprehensive plan and explore important issues and topics in anticipation of an enlivened conversation focused on the comprehensive plan this summer and fall. Here you see the next steps in the process to updating the critical areas regulations. This Thursday, the Planning Commission will begin review of background information and an outline of proposed changes that will further be developed and brought back to the commission in March. The purple boxes show the first steps in the Transfer Development Rights, or TDR, Code and Policy Revamp. There is a workshop scheduled for February 15th with the Planning Commission, followed by a workshop with the city council on March 12th. Another date worth noting is the project team has set a key meeting with King County staff for next week, Tuesday, January 23rd, to talk about the current inter-local agreement and how we might amend it.
David, sorry, I'm going to pause you for a second. The screen on this end went black, and we can't see what you're referring to. Maybe, can you? I think. There we go. All right, sorry about that. Please proceed.
No problem. Another date worth noting is the project team has set a key meeting with King County staff for next Tuesday, January 23rd, to talk about the current inter-local agreement and how we might amend it to jumpstart the city's, the city's in-city TDR program versus the King County TDR program. This work is interrelated with several other policy efforts, and we look forward to exploring opportunities to preserve delicate property within the city while potentially also amplifying housing affordability. The Town Center Plan and Code Amendment Team is moving quickly, considering this project was only just approved at the end of last year. We have officially launched the project with the consultant team and city staff busy setting up the project schedule, public and stakeholder engagement strategies, and the project team is currently reviewing existing plans, regulations, environmental studies, and preparing to engage with key stakeholders. This is all part of creating an existing conditions and audit report. One thing to specifically note is to mark the calendar for February 28th. The city will be hosting an open house where affordable housing experts, developers, consultants, and city staff will share insights about the project and strategies for bringing more affordable housing to the town center. The project- The project team will share the existing conditions audit report, preliminary findings, feedback received from the open house, and stakeholder engagement, and discuss the project's focus and priorities with the Planning Commission on February 15th and the city council on March 5th. For the comprehensive plan, staff and the consultant team are working to develop and review drafts for each of the comprehensive plan elements. Currently, staff are in receipt of and are reviewing the draft land use and housing elements, with the other elements coming later this month. In the coming weeks, the project team will begin working to schedule further reviews with internal stakeholders in anticipation of releasing additional elements. Additionally, over the next few months, staff and the project consultant will work through reviewing draft elements and incorporating feedback before releasing the draft to the Planning Commission, allowing the Planning Commission to begin its formal review of the comprehensive plan in March. To align with the Port of Seattle Economic Development Grant deliverable timelines, the Planning Commission will review the draft economic development element a bit early on February 1st, 2024. This will be followed by a public release draft of the comprehensive plan in March. Keep in mind, and it's important to note, that the first draft will not be a complete cover-to-cover draft, so to speak, as we will continue to work on different chapters of the plan and fill in some of the missing pieces in the spring. The next project, the development of a city transit plan, is led by Public Works. I'll hand it over to Audrey Starsee to provide some details on the status of this project in addition to some other Public Works-related items that she would like to report on. Audrey?
Thank you, David. Wow, that's loud. Okay. Good evening, council. As David mentioned, we are finalizing the transit plan. We are very excited to bring that to council and have a public hearing on February 20th. We will be back on March 5th to adopt the final plan. So, many of the, the plan will reveal a series of projects that we have prepared for the public's input and feedback on, including Transit Signal Priority and some different elements that we'll talk about, a little bit about later this evening that'll fit in nicely with this Hollyway corridor project. Next slide, please. I also just wanted to take a few moments to just thank our Public Works crews and really all of the agencies involved in the last week as we have collectively, as a region, responded to the series of storm events over the last probably eight days. So we started out last week with a fairly significant wind event in Sammamish that brought a series of down trees, one in particular that crossed Issaquah Falls City Road and brought the road to a full closure for about 15 hours or so. So it was a coordinated response with PSE and the schools and many parties involved. So just kudos to the crew. Next slide, please. And then the fun continued for the week. So, you know, the forecast constantly changed, and we were ready throughout the week as those conditions changed every few hours. So, a few photos are just highlighting several water main breaks that we've responded to throughout the weekend, and then even early morning today, just to make sure that those roads are drivable and in the best operable winter conditions as possible. The crew was continuing to work late tonight as, again, the forecasts keep changing and possible freezing rain is predicted to begin around 7:00 tonight. So, thank you again. That's all I had. Awesome.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Do you want me to ask if there are questions, David? Or do you want to leave? Just kidding. Are there any questions?
I'm here for the long haul, so...
There you go. Are there any questions for David? And/or Audrey, but we have Audrey a little bit longer, too. All right, well, thank you both so much.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you all again here soon. Have a good evening.
Yeah, you too. All right. Next up, we have open government training with Ogden Murphy Wallace's Emily Roman... God, I had it in my head. I said it over and over, and now I can't say it. Emily, super excited to have you.
Good evening, council, mayor, members of the public. I hope you can all hear me. I was having some technical difficulties there for a moment.
Yeah, we have you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, let me get my screen up here. All right, can you all see that okay?
Yes.
I'm seeing some heads nodding. Wonderful, thank you. Try to lower my screen here so you don't get blinded by my spotlight up there. All right, so, good evening. Thanks for having me. Again, my name is Emily Romanenko. I'm an Assistant City Attorney. I work with Kerry Sand Ogden Murphy Wallace, and we're here tonight to go through some open government training. So we're gonna go through three different RCWs that govern our actions here. We've got the Public Records Act at RCW 4256. We've got the Record Retention and Destruction Requirements at RCW 4014, and we've got the Open Public Meetings Act at 4230. So the first up is the Public Records Act. The intent of the Public Records Act is to ensure open and transparent records. The goal is to allow people to be informed about government actions and help keep the government accountable. It provides folks with broad access rights to our records. I know public records have been an ongoing conversation here with the city, and so this is something that I'm sure you're all familiar with. And we've got a couple different regulations that help guide our actions. We've got, again, the state law there. We've also got the Washington Administrative Code, the WAC, which has the model rules. And then we've got our own public records policy. So, like I said, RCW 4256 establishes the legal framework and minimum requirements that we need to meet related to public records. The WAC contains the model rules, and it has additional clarifications regarding how we should comply with the Public Records Act. And then the third and final regulation there is the city's own public records policy, which is modeled on the WAC's model rules, and it outlines the reasonable regulations for the handling of public records requests and how the city responds when it receives a public records request. I would just note that this policy was updated in 2013 to incorporate guidance for obtaining records on personal devices. The new guidance includes procedures for obtaining missing declarations, and I'll get into a little bit more about what those are later on, and records from former city employees and officials. The intent is just to be sure that the city can demonstrate it as undertaken and adequate and reasonable search, which is the standard that the PRA establishes, to make sure that we've done that search for any records that are on those personal devices. In this day and age, with records being created on all kinds of different devices and platforms, it's just important to make sure that we have, are able to show that we've taken an adequate and reasonable search for those records. The question is, of course, what is a public record, right? The PRA applies to all public records, so it's important to know what that means. The public record is defined, public record is defined to include any writing, excuse me, containing information relating to the conduct of government or the performance of any governmental or proprietary function, prepared, owned, used, or retained by any state or local agency regardless of the physical form or characteristics. Excuse me, so a writing can mean many things. It can mean written records, you know, like something you write on a legal pad, emails, text messages, voicemails, photos, webpage content, et cetera. However, I think it's important to note that it's not enough for it to just be a document. The document also needs to be used, prepared, owned, or retained in the furtherance of governmental activity, not merely just about government activity. So, I'll get into that here a little bit in the next page of what relating to the conduct of government means. I think it's important to know that it can be anything on personal records, including social media. If the employer, excuse me, the employee or the official prepared the document within his or her scope of work, so for example, if you posted something on Facebook about an event that the city's having, you likely did that because of your role as a city council member wanting to promote city activities, so that would definitely count as a public record. It can also be records prepared by someone other than the city but used or relied on by the city. This could be an example for a consultant that you have to help with the comprehensive plan, for example. Those records would certainly be related, used or relied on by the city, but may be held by the consultant there for the comprehensive plan. And then I have note there that records, there was a case about this, records prepared by a consultant or the functional equivalent of an employee on behalf of the agency are considered public records. So, one thing to note is that records on agency devices that are purely personal in nature are excluded. Those are not public records. So even if it's, you use your city phone, for example, and you have a personal text on there, that would not be considered a public record unless the record became a government, record related to a government issue. And the example that always comes up is if, for instance, an ethics committee investigated a public official for using agency time or resources for personal issues, and the personal records were then part of the investigation, those would then become public. But otherwise, as a standard practice, records on agency devices that are purely personal nature, you know, about your family or something like that, would not be considered public record. So the requirements of the Public Record Act are listed here. We need to identify a public records officer, adopt the local policy that we have, publish the list of exemptions and prohibitions that prevent us from disclosing a record, maintain an index of public records, adopt a fee schedule, provide a review for any denial of records, which very rarely happens. The denial of records very rarely happens, so you don't have to, there's not very many appeals of records. And then have PRA training requirements. And of course, we meet all of those here in the city. So, in response to a records request, within five days, the city must do certain things. They must make the record available, provide a place, say, for example, if the city has these records already published because another person requested them, or it's a, you know, maybe it's a council packet, they could direct the requester to that place on the city's website, acknowledge that the request has been received, and provide a reasonable time for when those records are going to be available. Within that, you can also clarify the request if it's unclear, or you can deny the request and we can provide a reason for why we're denying it. That does not happen very often. Usually, we can find a way to provide at least part of the record in a redacted form. So it's, I don't, I personally have never denied a request for public records. So, digging in a little bit more into the specific requirements, I mentioned this earlier, an agency must conduct an adequate search for the responsive records that has to be reasonably calculated to uncover responsive records. I think that's important to note because it's not like we need to go turn over every single possible stone that's out there. We just need to document the search terms that we're using and look in, you know, all the normal places and talk to the normal people that might have, that we may think have those records. So, again, we don't have to go ask every single staff person and every single council member if they have a record. You know, we use our best judgment and discretion to make sure it's fairly narrowly tailored. Again, I had mentioned that some parts of records can be exempt from disclosure. However, the exemptions are very narrowly construed. They are all statutory, statutorily listed, so we have to follow what the rules say and can't really color outside the lines there. I think an important point to note is that there's no general right to privacy. There is a test for it that's listed here, but it's a pretty high bar, and courts have, again, narrowly construed this. And so, what we may think of as kind of being embarrassing, maybe you cursed in a text message, for example, that wouldn't be something that we would be able to protect. You know, we'd need to disclose that. And so, again, no general right to privacy. It has to be highly offensive and not of legitimate concern to the public, so that's a pretty high bar. Unfortunately, in the state of Washington, we cannot charge fees to inspect records or to search, review, and redact records. That's exceedingly frustrating from the city staff standpoint, I think, because we spend a lot of time searching and reviewing and redacting records, but the state legislature has decided that under the Sunshine laws, we should be providing those records for free. So, we cannot charge for those. I get that question a lot, and I think it's, is what it is, unfortunately. If we don't comply with the Public Records Act, there are penalty factors that the courts have created both mitigating and aggravating factors that can go into the penalty calculation for PRA violations. They're pretty extensive, and I don't want to bore you, but I can list them in supplemental material if you have additional questions about those aggravating factors or mitigating factors. As I mentioned before, the city's, did, has adopted a public records policy in 2018. It was recently updated in 2013, and it just outlines how the city implements the PRA. Again, it has times for responses and how requests are handled. We have a categorization process here in Sammamish. It also outlines the legal review and redactions, and has the other requirements to meet the WAC and the RCW related to the PRA. All right, now we're getting into the records retention requirements. Records management has significantly evolved as the number of records and types of technology on which the records are stored has evolved. When this RCW was first enacted, we didn't have things like cell phones and social media, so there has been definitely an evolution of how records management is applied. However, the goals remain the same. Agencies must retain records pursuant to state-established schedules and timelines. And in order to meet those requirements and those timelines, we have to be able to locate the records when we need them, and to reduce liability, we need to destroy records when they've met those retention requirements. And so, while not a very exciting topic, it is something that does, is very important for how the city operates because it can create a lot of liability and reduce liability if the rules are followed. I just liked this comic. I thought that it comes up, sort of summarizes how people feel about records retention policies. But I think the WAC here is just important to point out. We need to store all of our records, including electronic records, in a usable, searchable, retrievable, and authentic manner for the length of the designated retention period. So, in other words, if there's a hard copy original of a document, we need to retain that. Scanning it in can sometimes be sufficient, but again, it depends on what the record retention requirements are. And then similarly, printing and retaining a hard copy of an email, for example, is not a substitute for the electronic version unless it's approved by the applicable records committee. So, again, it's just important to make sure we keep the records in the format that they were in, that they were created in. There are very significant consequences for destroying records prematurely. Fines are assessed on a per-day, per-page basis at the court's discretion. In addition to the fines and penalties, destroying records can also result in intangible consequences such as the loss of institutional knowledge, continuity of business operations, and loss of historical records. So, you know, it's best just to not destroy records unless you've consulted with the city clerk's office and determined that the record has met its record retention period. And so, if you have any questions, the best policy is to ask and make sure either the record has met its retention policy and you can destroy it, or, you know, we need to keep it, and the clerk's office can certainly help with that. So again, if you have a record related to city business, which most records are, we need to retain it for the time period specified in the state's retention schedule. It's not enough to say, you know, all emails need to be retained for five years. Unfortunately, it's the content within the email that you have to review, and that's the same for voicemails, text messages, whatever it is. It's the content that determines the length of time. It's not the type of record that it is. So, that's why it's a very case-by-case analysis, that we need to be, again, be able to produce it if it's needed. So that goes back to the comment I made earlier about retaining it in its original form, whether that's a hard copy, voicemail, et cetera. And then, once we do destroy it, we need to be able to provide proof of how and when it was disposed of, and that's in the event we have any litigation or a PRA that requests that, we can say, oh, nope, that was destroyed, or nope, here it is. So, these are just the steps that we have to take to make sure that the records are retained correctly. And then, we've got the proper disposition of records. So sometimes if records have been met, have met their record retention timeline, they can be destroyed. We do track all of that to make sure, again, that we have the proper documentation to determine how that record was destroyed in the event we are ever asked about it in the future. So our third regulatory framework that we're discussing tonight is the OPMA. This is codified at RCW 4230, and it's the Open Public Meetings Act, the OPMA. Similar to the Public Records Act, the OPMA is designed to ensure transparent government and to allow the public to view the decision-making process. So tonight, where is a good example of that? We are in an open public meeting. Excuse me. The OPMA applies to any public agency, including sub-agencies and committees, can even apply to ad hoc committees, so it's very important to review with our legal counsel whether the ad hoc committee may be subject to the OPMA. The best practice is just to assume that it is and make sure that all the open, the meeting is open for the members of the public to attend. There are some situations... There are some situations, limited ones, in which the O P M A does not apply, doesn't apply to the courts, the legislature agency is not defined as a public agency, and then private organizations. There's also certain activities listed there that the O P M A does not apply to. So I would say most things, most meetings are going to be governed by the O P M A, but there are a few things that are not, and those are just good to note. The intent, again, of the O P M A is to ensure that actions of the government are open to the public, gavel to gavel from open to close. Members of the public are permitted to attend these open meetings unless otherwise prohibited. There, again, are times when members of the public can be excluded. I'm going to elaborate on that in a few slides. And again, the purpose of the O P M A is just to ensure that the public can view the decision-making process, that nothing happens behind closed doors. Now, there's a bit of a nuance in that the O P M A only applies when the public agency's governing body holds a meeting at which action is taken. Action includes many, many things. It's a very broad term. But it's important to note that it does have to, the meeting, the governing body has to take an action for the O P M A to apply. So action can include all the things that are listed there. Again, it's a very, very, very broad concept. There are many different types of meetings, but three different types of meetings. I guess not many, but at least three. Most meetings that are, occur are regular meetings. These are those that are held according to the city's ordinance resolution or the city council's bylaws. Governing bodies are required to publish the agenda so that everyone knows what is going to be discussed. And again, it's held on a very regular schedule. Sometimes the governing body needs to meet outside of the regularly scheduled meeting, and when that happens, it's called a special meeting. There are specific noticing requirements for special meetings, and the discussion during the meeting is limited to what's on the agenda so that so folks know, you know, that nothing, that there won't be anything that isn't on the agenda discussed, which can occur in a regular meeting. There can be things that are not necessarily on the agenda that happen at a regular meeting. And then there are also emergency special meetings. This, of course, is intended to allow the governing body to deal with a true emergency. And in that situation, no notice is required. As I mentioned, there are certain times when the public can be excluded from the discussion of the governing body. The intent here is to protect the governing body's ability to discuss the topic freely amongst themselves and preserve negotiating or bargaining power and attorney-client privilege communications. These include the things that are listed here, a lot of real estate discussions. I know you folks were in an executive session earlier. Meeting with legal counsel, collective bargaining, bid contracts, things like that. However, it's important to note that no action can be taken in the executive session. The session is only discussion-based. Any final decision needs to be made back out in open session, again, so that members of the public can see what's going on. So the regular meetings are intended to be a forum for the city council to discuss city business. It's extremely important to ensure that discussions of city business remain and stay in open public meetings and don't occur behind closed doors or through serial meetings. Serial meetings are a lot more common these days with text messages, emails, phone calls. So it's very important to be aware of the possibility of serial meetings and avoid it. Serial meetings can occur when a quorum of council members take action, which, again, can just be a discussion of city business. And that would, if there is a quorum of council members that discuss a topic, that could be construed as being about city business, and that would be covered by the O P M A. This can happen, for example, if one council member calls several council members up to a quorum to discuss a topic, and that would be a violation of the O P M A because that would be a serial meeting. As I note there, the quorum of members doesn't need to be on the same email chain. It can be successive emails creating a tree, or, you know, successive text messages. And so it's just important to make sure that you avoid talking about city business outside of a city meeting. The only way that it is permissible is that if one member emails the rest of the members for the purpose of providing information about, say, a committee meeting that you attended and you wanted to share that information out, you would just make sure that there's no response back that includes everyone to avoid any potential O P M A violations. Last year, there was some updates to the O P M A in light of the changes that came down after the pandemic. These have been incorporated already into our rules and regulations, but I think this was just important to note. And those things are listed here. Public comment has, was updated a little bit, and then remote attendance was allowed. Specifically, previously had been sort of implied, but at this point, the legislature determined that while the meeting itself must be held in a physical location and allow the public to attend, the members of the governing body can all participate remotely if they choose to. I think we're getting close to wrapping up here. So the last thing I would just note would be the penalties for any violation of the O P M A. A court can impose a $500 civil penalty against each member for personal liability for the first O P M A violation, and $1,000 for each successive violation. Courts will award costs and attorney's fees to a successful party seeking to challenge the decision made by the governing body in violation of the O P M A. And so, and then finally, actions taken at a meeting that violates the O P M A can be declared null and void. So don't violate the O P M A. I think is the short, too long, don't read version.
Or you have a redo, a do-over.
Or you have a redo. Yes, good point. Or you have, that is the easiest thing. It's just, just a redo if there's any concerns that what happened at the meeting might be in violation. And I think that's it. So I will stop sharing my screen and be available for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Emily. Deputy Mayor Howe?
Thank you, Emily. I do have a quick question. It has to do with, say, a Facebook posting where there are comments. How responsible are you for trying to capture all of the comments? Because that can change on a day-to-day basis.
That's such a good question. And so I think I would say it depends, which I know is such a terrible lawyer answer. I would want to know a little bit more about the context of the conversation. Was it something that you posted and then people are commenting about? Is it something that you commented on? If you were the one that was commenting, I would say we would need to just see your comments because those are the ones that are the public record, not everybody else's comments. So I would say that's a case-by-case decision, and to the extent that we want more regulations around that, we can certainly adopt some social media policies. There are plenty out there that help guide that concept and can help us determine, you know, where to draw the line as appropriate.
Great. Thank you. That's actually very helpful.
Do I have any other questions or comments from council? All right. Did we get a certificate?
I'll defer to City Attorney Sand on that one.
Yeah. Actually, you do get credit for this training because, you know, you all are required to have this kind of training. And so we'll be sure to work with the clerk's office to make sure any of you can report out this time as, you know, what was it, a half hour of training? Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, thank you so much, Emily, and thank you for condensing it to a nice and quick presentation. It's good to have at least the slides, too, on hand. So thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Have a great evening.
Nice to see you. Okay, unfinished business. Dun, dun, dun. Okay, so we have Audrey, Jed, and Greg for the Sahaly Way corridor plan.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Audrey Starcy, Public Works Director. I am joined this evening by Greg Stamatiyo, to my right, our new Deputy Public Works Director. Joining me online, Jed Ireland, our Senior Project Engineer. He'll be managing this project, as well as Doug Van Gelder, our City Engineer. So we're here this evening to continue our discussion that started two weeks ago to talk about the Sahaly Way corridor plan and study. The Sahaly Way project in general, or various versions of the project, have been a part of the city's comprehensive planning efforts, really since incorporation in, on a majority of our transportation improvement plans or TIPS. The scope of the work proposed this evening can be thought of as a master plan, if you will, very similar to what we do for some of our parks projects or stormwater projects. This is the guide that will guide us through future improvements for Sahaly Way, both short-term and near-term. This master plan provides an alternatives analysis that is much needed and is deeply rooted in technical analyses, as well as community input. This master plan approach will provide the city with a clear plan for the corridor that aligns with our current comprehensive planning efforts, so just looking at least 20 years into the future. It aligns with our transit plan and our climate action plan and other big projects underway. It provides public transparency that is much needed for a plan of this scale. And finally, it develops an end-to-end multimodal plan that, again, we can use as a guide and will help us prioritize both near-term and possibly smaller-scale projects, as well as long-term projects. This plan is also key for helping us refine our relationships with partnering agencies and will eventually guide us to 30% design, which is a critical point to reach for grant funding opportunities in the future as well. So with that, Greg and I are available to answer any questions that come up through the discussion. And Jed, whenever you're ready, go ahead and start.
Thanks, Audrey. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I trust that my screen is sharing because it shows that on my monitor. This is a screen, this is a map of showing the project limits. And what you can see here is the project, the north end of the corridor, the Sahaly Way corridor, the city limit. We're also showing that part of it, part of the analysis, is going to look at north of the city limit in unincorporated King County, including the intersection that's operated by WashDOT and State Route 202. What are the goals of this corridor study? At the end, we want to, a result to be a corridor plan with a defined Phase One project that's been analyzed and vetted. The goal with this Phase One project is to get consensus and have a 30, take it to a 30% design level so that we can match it with grant funding opportunities. There's some here listed on the screen. But typically, a 30% design would be, would be a good match for us to compete for these grants. And then having it as part of an overall plan would score highly and be competitive for the grant funding. We would also be looking for options for high-impact small projects that could be taken to 100% design potentially quickly under the current budget, and then taken to construction ahead of time. But they would be consistent with the overall corridor plan, including the Phase One larger project where we'd be seeking grant funding. The objectives for the study, the objectives for this evening is that we're seeking a design contract approval to evaluate the corridor in alignment with the things that Audrey had mentioned, the new traffic counts based on just the trends that we've been seeing since the work-from-home and the flexible work schedules, but also our updated traffic demand model and the new transit plan, climate action plan, and comprehensive plan update that'll be working concurrently. We also want to analyze the north of the city limit. Even though it's outside of the city jurisdiction, it's important for us to see how much sensitivity and what does it mean relative to other projects and other costs. What do improvements outside, just outside of the city, mean to us? And that might be leverage for us to consider partnerships with other agencies. This is all going to kick off with a council workshop, and which I'll show in a timeline in one of the future slides, where we would seek direction on the public outreach and how we would develop the alternatives. And then we would be getting resident feedback on this public process for what are the corridor needs by the public that'll be using it. And then, again, the result would be a selected Phase One project for 30% design for grant, seeking grants, and then other discrete projects that can be done immediately that are compatible with it. And then, of course, the corridor plan would have the corridor build out, what to build at what time. What's new here in this study is that there are multiple alternatives. It is not focused primarily just on vehicle traffic or the, and, or just on a particular build-out or a certain cross-section. We're really going to be looking at a bunch of alternatives to really address the public needs and these plans that are going to be leveraging the future and how mode people will be changing modes of traffic. Their modes will be changing partly because of new work schedules, but then also because of light rail that'll be built in Redmond. We'll be meeting, we'll be doing consensus building to meet with council so that then we can include the public in this public process to build consensus for the corridor. We'll be meeting with stakeholder agencies, not only our local utilities, but also Metro and WashDOT and unincorporated King County. Of course, we'll be depending on these other facilities to access light rail, and we depend on Metro currently for our transit. Like we said, we'll also be looking at smaller inexpensive projects that can be pursued, where construction can be pursued rapidly and that are compatible with the overall consensus design. Again, the analysis will be in alignment with the works in progress, the updated traffic demand model and the comp plan update, the transit plan, climate action plan. So holistic corridor plan really will result in telling us, we'll have consensus on what's the priority projects, why they're competitive, because of cost and all these other factors and all their modes of transportation, not just vehicle traffic. And we will know the priority, what to build first, and then what will be built in order. Here's that timeline or the milestone slide that I had mentioned before. If you'll see, there's like a little blue and orange bullseye. Those are some of the predicted council touchpoints as part of this process. And I'm just going to step through some of the tasks. The first one is listen and learn. This is going to start at council with a workshop as we prepare for goals, the goals for the corridor and the goals of what we're going to achieve from the public outreach. It says January in here. In reality, this is probably moving back to probably February. And then we will have an initial public outreach so that we can, in the broadest sense, net what the public expects for the future and how they plan to use the corridor to make sure that we don't leave any stone unturned. The alternatives development will then proceed, based on that feedback, with 10 alternatives. There'll be a memo designed, but it'll have 10 alternatives for the corridor that tries to net the gamut of what is possible to achieve these different objectives for goals and for the public, what the public participation informs us of. We'll then reduce this to six alternatives that are most likely, that are the plans that are most, you know, would benefit from additional inputs of the geotechnical analysis and the stormwater analysis and the traffic analysis to really find out what is the impact of these different projects in terms of cost, impact to facilities like storm structures, and then also the travel time through the corridor. And so those are going to be, those six are going to get more analysis and are going to have more inputs. Then there'll be a design workshop with city staff to analyze how, where these inputs have resulted in, in costs and in travel times, and in how they meet the objectives of council and the public. And then we will be sharing that with council. It shows here May of 20th of this year. Then we're going to prepare, we're going to refine these alternatives with materials that we can prepare for the public. And then we come back to the council to share, to share with council first what we're going to present to the public, what our plans are, so we can get that feedback, finish the package that we will develop to the public. And then we will have that in the third quarter of this year. And, or actually, excuse me, this thing is showing Q3, Q4. After that, we will have the corridor plan development because we will have the feedback from the public and we originally shared with council. And what we will do is we will reduce this to one, one key, one concept for the corridor. And at this point, you know, this is, this is a very high-level look. This might be a point where we also then come back with council to verify and confirm that one. And then from that one, that one corridor design, we are going to do a more analysis. It might become a hybrid of some of the other alternatives based on council and public feedback. And we will refine the preferred concept analysis and have a draft corridor plan. And then, of course, then we'll come back to approval. Our goal is to have this finalized and approved in second quarter of 2025, where council will have a finished product of a corridor plan. At that point, we would have budget and time in the remaining in the year to take the design to 30% design of Phase One that would allow us to build a substantial portion of the project to a 30% design level, rather. We'd be designing a 30% the project to a 30% design level, rather, we'd be designing a 30% level to seek grant, pair it with grant funding. And we could also proceed with other discrete projects that are compatible with the overall corridor plan. We've received some questions related to this, and so I just have a very short summary of some high-level questions just for discussion. First question is, is only vehicular traffic being addressed? No, we are looking at all the modes of traffic and we are looking at how it matches up with the other policies and objectives of council. Second question, why a study? Why not use the money, use this money to fix problems at intersections? That's a good question. There are good, there are good projects that can be done, but it goes back to the first question. If you just fix intersections, that's only solving typically vehicular traffic and level of service at intersections. What we're looking at is the whole corridor, not just vehicular traffic. Also, which intersections? We know, from experience, we know that some intersections are a problem now. Which ones are going to be a problem in 20 years? What's the forecast? What are going to be the needs for pedestrians to cross and to reach transit? Are we going to have the geometry right for these intersection improvements to match the ultimate build-out and widening of the road? So that's why we do a study rather than just à la carte improvements at this time. Third question, can we save money by not doing storm, geotech, environmental, and structural analysis at this time? The short answer is no. The reason is that if you were to do separate projects in different phases, every time we do a corridor or road improvement, we do all of this analysis and we do it for specific design elements. What we're proposing is that we do it corridor-wide, and there's a benefit because it'll help us look at what, when we have an alternative that we like, we're going to be able to put a dollar value to that with high confidence to say, is this something that we realistically can afford? Or we could, or could we really invest in another alternative that also meets our objectives? In addition, some of these improvements, like the geotactical, will help you with the storm analysis. You might have some very big storm structures that you need for this corridor. You can't put them just wherever. You have to put them in particular locations. So you might have a phasing plan that really leverages where your large storm facilities are going to be or where your large retaining wall expenses need to be because of the topography. That's why we're doing all the analysis now so that we do the right projects at the right time, and it informs us of which alternatives really are the ones that we think will build consensus for a permanent plan. Fourth question, do other city projects require such planning effort? Yes, they do. Particularly corridor studies, particularly when we do corridor build-outs, we always start with a preliminary engineering analysis, traffic analysis, and a lot of this effort. Just some examples, Southeast Fourth Town Center, Issaquah Falls City Road, Phase One, East Lake Semamish Parkway, it, just the changes with the intersection configuration and everything at the Parkway, this was all done with preliminary analysis and public feedback. And then also the Lewis Thompson Project, which is nearing 100% completion right now, also went through a design, a public process to have a specific plan for that corridor. Okay, so we're going to look at the scope and fee here. I'll just start at the top. That's the total price for the contract. For the current scope, it's $836,000. And on to that, we also have a management reserve that is administered by the city manager. And that's for the corridor study and the outreach and then resulting in a corridor plan. To the right, I have tasks and I have little stars popping up. These starred elements are elements that would be part of any discrete project. If you were going to do a Phase One that you just decided that we're going to follow, you know, let's just build this phase first, you would still have to do all of these projects, all of these elements in isolation, the project management, the coordination meetings, city council briefings, the public outreach program. And then moving on to number six, initial alternatives analysis, because there are always going to be some deviations from just the public work standards. There's always going to be some things that the corridor needs because of the unique character, the topography, or how it's been built out. The geotechnical structure of stormwater and environmental analyses, these are all going to be part of every project. We're doing it all in the front end. We're getting it started now for the whole project so that we have durable, reliable, high-confidence cost estimates and so that we know that we're doing the right projects at the right time with this consensus plan. Going on to the budget, it's within the budget. We have the budget to do this and then to go to 30% design next year. And then we'll also have the opportunity to maybe take other smaller projects to design completion for construction earlier. It's also traffic impact fee eligible. For 2025, then, just to reiterate, we're, we're going to be proposing a coming back with a contract amendment after the adoption of the corridor plan to proceed with 30% design of the preferred option with the intent of getting, pairing that with grant funding And, and with that, now the presentation is over, and now open it for questions. And then there's a recommended motion for your review on the screen now.
Thank you, Judd, for the thorough presentation. Council, I will open it up for questions. Excuse me. Deputy Mayor Howe?
Thank you, and thanks for the-
Sorry, if Councilwoman Stewart raises her hand, I just can't see unless we close the, come out of the PowerPoint.
You sure? Okay. Okay. Okay, so I just have a few questions. I think it's extremely helpful to understand what has to be done anyway. And to be honest, that's kind of what took me across the finish line on this one, is to know that there's a certain amount of work that in order to get anything accomplished, you have to do this investment or a big chunk of it anyway. I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to trim back certain aspects of this. I'm hoping that, you know, there may be pieces of it that we don't have to, that we learn enough that we can make a decision and not, maybe not have to do a component. But I understand what you're presenting here. I had a couple of questions around the 30%. So does that mean if you get to 30% of design for Phase One, it's not the same as shovel-ready? It's just 30% of design? And so I'm trying to understand how realistic it is potentially to be, to be, to get, say, for example, a grant, because I don't consider this a regional support. I consider this an incredibly important support to residents, but it's not, it benefits the region per se. PSRC grants tend to be very small and tiny. I don't even know if that I would include them as a target. So I'm, I'd like to understand better around what do we think our grant opportunities truly might be in the future? I'd also like to understand what is the time span or the length of time that we think that this study will actually service us? How long is it good for? For the work that's going to be completed, is it something that really would last us for, say, 20 years? Or is that really not realistic in the way that we should be looking at this? So I'll start with those two.
So I'll start out by looking at the forecast. 20 years is how far we're looking out, and that's pretty common. Realistically, because of the topography and the constraints on the corridor, what we're looking at is the ultimate build-out of the corridor. And any forecast will have difficulty looking beyond that because there might be different trends or a different paradigm of how people use the corridor. And this, also, this city's nearing build-out. And so 20 years is, is a good reference point. That's 2044. And so I think this will be a durable plan and it'll, it'll, it'll last through that time. And partly because at that point, how much land will be left over development? So really, I think that, so that's a reasonable timeframe. The other question's a little bit harder in terms of what are the grants to be available? And I don't know if, if my team has some other responses on that. We did list, we did list in there some of the different options, but 30% is legitimate because it helps us really define exactly what the limits are that we're trying to achieve. And yeah, some of the grants, some of the grants like TIB or the PSRC, some of them might be smaller. TIB has funded a lot of projects, so TIB could potentially be a good one. That's the Transportation Improvement Board. And so potentially we could pair it, and there's also going to be federal grants. And so the reason is these, the large, the corridor is going to be expensive, and so I think that it will pair well because of the completion of the corridor. So it'll meet some objectives for us, even though it's not in a commercial center where some of the grants might focus on that.
And what would the grants be for? Would it be to get to the next phase in design? Because typically, that's not something that's popular to get funded either. Design is not popular. They'll fund construction and implementation of infrastructure.
Yes, it would probably be construction. Also, as we get closer, you know, we're going to workshop this with council and we're going to be looking at the federal grant timeline. We can also, we could take the design further than 30%, but 30% is, is a good objective. We could be pursuing for construction with 30% design because we'd have a lot of the questions answered.
If I may jump in as well, 30% is, is the, the right level to come in with a lot of grants. Greg can speak to a lot of the federal, federal grants and what that award process looks like, but when we reach 30%, we've done our, enough of our homework, right, for the funding partners to take a look at actually taking our project seriously. We've done enough of the work, especially in the environmental sector, to make sure that we've fully vetted some of those constraints.
And 30% is the cap actually for federal grant requirements is the ceiling that the FTA doesn't want you to progress past 30% design before evaluating your project for grant readiness and opportunities for grants, actually. So this is the appropriate design level for us to maximize our grant strategy.
And I was also looking at just the milestones too, and just trying to make sure I understood that there would be opportunities at the different milestones. For example, to evaluate, assess, and determine, you know, go-forward types of things, because it occurred to me that you may get information from the geotechnical side of the house that tells you the three ideas that we thought were really cool, they're off the table. And so now we're just going to focus on that, which is actually achievable by humans in our lifetime.
You're correct, yeah. And that's exactly why it was phased, and that's how important it is that we're doing all this work upfront.
And so I also tried to understand too, when the geotechnical work would actually be done? It sounded like it was further down in the milestone. And so I thought that was kind of interesting. Is there such a thing as a two-phase geotech where you're going in and just determining, yeah, we could actually do a lot of, you know, it's sound enough or solid enough ground that we can expand our thinking here? And then the, the real seismic work, for example, might happen later? Or does it all have to be done at one time?
It could be phased, as you're saying. And so this project, actually, when we refine the alternatives from 10 down to six, the six projects are the ones that will benefit from the geotechnical analysis. And you might, and so that analysis will be determining where our storm facilities will be going, where we might be able to infiltrate, and then also looking at wall locations. It is common, as you get more into design, as you elaborate on design, you might do additional geotechnical exploration in order to limit risk. And that might happen as a, like kind of a second phase of geotechnical exploration.
And I think that the other piece of information I think is helpful is to actually show how much the individual tasks cost or, simply because it, when you add them up, it makes perfect sense, but I've just known that for different studies, we've spent $100,000 on this or $90,000 on that. And so the price tag right now looks huge. And I think that's where some of the choke point is. But by actually putting the costs assigned to each of the different tasks, it does help explain, oh, so the $90,000 is going to be for public outreach. $137,000 is going to go towards geotech. You know, when you start to split it out that way, the math starts to make more sense and is more rational, I think, to understand. So I appreciate it, you providing those, those numbers to us. Those are my questions for now. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you for the presentation. So it's my understanding that after the RFQ was, that was given to Partite, that there was a round of negotiations and to come up with this number of 836. Actually, it was much higher from what I understand, and then it was negotiated down. So there was room to come down, and so I understand why this corridor study is needed. I'm just having a hard time with that number. And is there a way to get it down further from 836, say, another $100,000? I mean, obviously, there was room to go from that higher number down to 836, and I don't know how this further breaks out, you know, the subtask that I'm looking at. I don't know, like, when you got from that higher number to this number now, what were the extraneous things that were eliminated? And are there more things that can be eliminated or, you know, the dollar amounts reduced?
Good question. Thank you. So when we get a proposal, you know, we have an analysis that we do based on hours for the different items of work that we're expecting. And so that gives us a basis for comparison. And so for instance, in this project, it, maybe it had, you know, it could have had a lot more public involvement hours. A lot of that is a little bit of a forecast of what they believe is going to happen. And, and so there is, that's where the negotiation comes in. If there's more hours than what we expect in a proposal, then we discuss that and we try to come together, come to terms with where our expectations are. And again, it's mostly based on hours and duration of the project, looking at the schedule, looking at what we're achieving and what person hours are needed to fulfill that objective. Going further, it's a balance because, of course, there is a little bit of room in there. When you have a trusted consultant, you don't expect them to overbill and just, you know, you know, just keep billing and running the clock. You expect to make gains on all the objectives that you're doing commensurate with the plan. If we were to save money on this, it could be, you know, it's really coming down to the analysis, the kind of analysis that we're doing. If we didn't want to do the detailed microsimulation, it has very high resolution and, but it's only one of the features that's under consideration. You could reduce that. You might be able to take a chunk out of that because you wouldn't need all of that programming time to get in all the inputs that go into a detailed model. You might do more of a tabular estimate of what travel times are through the corridor for the different scenarios. You might reduce the number of scenarios you start with. You might also have, you could potentially have less public impact or less of a public outreach because a lot of that is labor, it's person hours. So there's different ways you can get to a better price. However, you know, the, the analysis at some point gets to be jeopardized where you're not casting a wide enough net. You may not end up with the correct project where you get consensus at the end if you eliminate some of the choices at this stage. But it's possible to get to a number if you want to eliminate some of the work items.
Judd, if I may just add on to that a little bit, we've spent hours as a large project team going through the scope and, and really trying to whittle it down to what we believe is achieving, achieving the objectives of the plan, the study and the plan, and then the subsequent design work to follow that will really align with our transparency goals of the city. So it does have quite a bit of public engagement and outreach. And if we are also looking at, as Judd was talking about, some of the technical analysis, with that comes risk, right? So if we're not looking at some of that upfront, we may end up with an alternative that may not be fully vetted down the, I hate to say the word, down the road, but you know, in the future, we really want to do as much of that work upfront as we can so that we can fully understand what that corridor should be functioning as and earn our constraints with the corridor as well.
So what you're saying, Judd, is that you believe that all the items are needed and that all the due diligence was done and you don't see it, see us being able to get down lower from 836 without jeopardizing some of the analysis?
Yeah, correct. But I would recommend that we proceed with this scope.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Audrey and her team for answering all my questions and hanging in there with me, so thank you very much. I also, I'm really pleased to see that you took on board a lot of public input that you received and addressed them with your presentation too, so thank you for doing that. I like our plan. I like the amount of public outreach that we're going to do. I think we'll really benefit from that. I like that the small projects that we probably receive feedback on are kind of at the back of your mind, and that maybe is something we'll look at as we're moving through this process and that we'll get a priority order. I just had a question about, are we going to, as part of this whole project, as we move through it, are we going to be looking at speed limits on this corridor and traffic signal timing as well? Is that part of that or is that a whole separate thing?
Yes, that will be part of it.
Perfect. Thank you, Judd.
Wonderful. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you, guys. Very thorough work thus far. Couple of questions. It's my understanding that if we end up prioritizing things like sustainability, multimodal forms of transportation, and safety, that we would likely be eligible for a lot of the Inflation Reduction Act funding from the federal government around sustainability and those types of things. And that design projects are very much grant-eligible. Would that, and I know we don't know what that is yet because you haven't done the council roundtable on some of the public outreach. But is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, because I know, just from some of the regional meetings that we've gone to, there's, there are a lot of the organizations around these projects that will achieve some of our greenhouse gas reduction goals regionally and things like that, where some of the organizations, particularly like PSRC, are putting together lists of the types of grants and things. So I think we can continue to make sure, if you guys don't already have those pointers as we go to our regional meetings, we can forward that information to you. And then you talked a little bit about things like some of the technical analysis around, like, time of travel and things like that. I guess, but I'm more curious what your thoughts are. Is that if, if we do end up prioritizing some of those other things like sustainability, multimodal, and safety, potentially above time of travel, would we potentially consider, down the road, Audrey? Would we consider altering that analysis at all? And maybe that's where we could have savings because that's not as important, and we could do a different type of analysis?
I don't know if Audrey was going to take that or if that was...
I think we were both thinking, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jed, start, and I can add.
Well, I think, just to start, while Audrey's thinking, the time of travel analysis, the reason I like it is because it's a very detailed analysis and it really looks at driver behavior. So what happens is you end up getting individual cars, almost like SimCity simulator. And you spend, and it's, it's more refined and detailed. So you get driver behavior affecting every pixel or every car that's modeled. And so every change that you do, you're getting very refined data. And for your top options, we get four simulations under this scope, or videos, rather, of that simulation. And so I think it gives a lot of comfort and it just gives this vision thing. When we go to consensus, how do drivers anticipate and deal with the transit, with the geometry that's planned for that corridor option? So I just think that's a very useful tool. And it might be one of those things where we have three options, we have videos. But our final video is like, we want to look at an option that's a hybrid because it has some of the best pieces that we like out of these top three that are shared with the public. So I think it's a good analysis. It's not the only analysis. But I think it's helpful in the mix of things. And it's certainly not the priority to only look at time of travel for vehicles.
Awesome. Well, you had me when you said it would be like a video game, so I'm, I'm good with that. All right, thank you so much.
All right, council. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, great. Jed, I don't know if you want to put that motion back up, if anyone would like to make the motion? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, as soon as it gets on the screen.
Okay, I was going to say, yeah, unless you wrote it down somewhere.
I did not. I'm sorry. It was not that fast.
And I did also want to mention, I saw Audrey from your emails. I know we had public comment come in. You've addressed all the questions. And you said you'll put all questions and answers on the project webpage?
Yes, once the webpage is up and running, we'll post all the Q and A.
Awesome. Thank you.
Awesome. So I moved to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Partite Inc. in the amount of $923,574 for development of a Sahali Way corridor plan.
Second? All right, moved and seconded. Councilmember Stewart, would you like to speak to that?
I'll just say, appreciate all of the work from staff on this. I do like the idea of having a complete plan that we can then make sure that whatever small or medium-sized projects we do are in line with an overall plan that we know will come together and give us the best results.
And Councilmember Gupta, did you have a comment on that?
Are we discussing the motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, thank you to staff for the presentation. I think the benefit of this holistic study is, really can be seen in transit as we plan for transit, you know, as the 269 bus route is redrawn with the opening of Redmond Light Rail. That north piece is how our residents are going to get to light rail. So being able to look at the whole corridor, I think, really has value for the city. Grant opportunities, especially if the council decides to focus on multimodal transport. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. For my time on the Parks Commission, a lot of the challenge with connectivity is that we don't have this grand plan. There's not a map that we can look at. So if we can look at a big piece of the city that is specifically going to be used for transit, I think this has a lot of value. Building off of that, I do like, I do support expanding the scope down to Northeast 8th Street. Audrey, from your comments, it looks like we can choose to have that taken out of the management reserve. So my question is, do we need, if we choose to go in that direction, does council need to state that as part of the motion?
Appreciate the question, Councilmember Gupta. No, the management reserve is there as, that's available. And obviously, we, the staff would track the use of it. And we'll, there's multiple check-in points where staff will be coming back to council. If we need to get to that point to use it, we would come back and share out what that is and why when we get to that point.
So it would potentially be appropriate to make that decision in one of the council workshops? Is that...
Well, generally, the management reserve is there if we decide, you're talking about, excuse me, if we expand the scope?
Yes.
I think you, if you're going to expand the scope and identify the manager reserve, I think you might want to do that now just to give the team the knowledge base about where they're headed with the, with the project.
I would propose an amendment to the motion that we expand the scope down to Northeast 8th Street.
Yeah, I'll second that. Thank you. Councilmember Gupta, and then Councilmember Trine, did you want to speak to, I think, the amended motion on the floor?
No, thank you.
All right. And Councilmember Gupta, did you have? Oh, yeah. Okay, no, just making sure. All right, so the amended motion on the floor, I'm not going to try to repeat it, but I think we have it. Yeah, Scott?
Mayor, if I may, I think it would be great to repeat the amended motion just so that we're clear on what's being considered. And then before you vote on the final motion.
Okay, so it's the motion plus extend the project to 8th Street. Northeast 8th Street.
Jed, if you, just jumping in really quick, Jed, if you wouldn't mind sharing the motion on screen, that may be helpful.
Okay, one minute.
Sorry, go ahead. Did I need to include verbiage about the management funds? That was a no, right? Just that it's expanded to 8th Street, Northeast 8th? Okay.
I think that should suffice.
Sorry, our two, our two brains are talking down there.
Sorry, Mayor. So just to confirm, I think you all need to vote on the amendment and then vote on the amended motion.
Copy that. Okay, so the amendment is to extend to Northeast 8th Street. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by 6-1, that passes. And then the original motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye?
Mayor, hang on before you vote.
Oh, sorry, did I mix it up? Sorry.
It's the amended motion. I just want to be clear that you're voting on the amended motion.
Yes, sorry. The, okay. We already voted on the amendments. The amended motion, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
All right. So by 6-1, for both of those, the amendment and the amended motion both pass.
Thank you, Mayor and council, very much.
Thank you for coming back. Thank you for all your help.
Of course, anytime. Thank you.
Okay. Whew, all right. So now we have new business. We have the Arts Strategic Plan, RFPs. So we have Anjali, and I'm not sure if we have Emily Scott and Janie joining us online.
So I think Anjali should be in the room.
Yes.
Okay, great.
I just took a minute setting up, so, yeah. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. We have for your consideration tonight the approval of a request for proposals for the Arts Strategic Plan. $75,000 is allocated in the Professional Services Section of the Arts Commission's 2023-2024 biennial budget. Staff have worked with representatives of the Arts Commission to put together this document. Council's approval tonight will kick off the consultant selection process, and we will come back to you with a contract for the work once we have a consultant onboard. Online with me tonight is Emily Scott, Recreation and Cultural Services Manager and Staff Liaison to the Arts Commission, and Janie Walzer, Management Analyst for our department, who has compiled the document. With that, I'll turn it over to Janie for a presentation.
Thank you, Anjali. Good evening, council. So tonight, we're bringing the Arts Strategic Plan Request for Proposals to you for review. In this presentation, I will review the reason for this strategic plan, cover the tasks that we have in the current RFP that we're asking prospective firms to consider in their proposal submissions. We will review the anticipated timeline, and then we have a suggested motion for your consideration. So the Arts Commission was formed in 2003, and since then, they have been operating without a structured guiding document. There have been great accomplishments, but we believe that having a formal review and strategic plan will help future commissioners and staff alike in projects to come. The main goals of this strategic plan that we are hoping to create are to establish commission objectives, so commissioners have exact roles, programs, and public engagement outlines to follow; establish policies for art programs, such as the annual art grant, and how to manage donated works; procedures for art programs and installations, from identifying themes and locations to contracting and management of those projects; financial strategies for art programs or permanent art sculptures, and identifying of best practices for funding sources in cities of comparable sizes; and then lastly, a public art plan for the commission to follow, or in other words, a work plan for the future. These identifies, these identified goals were used to create a framework for the Requests for Proposal Task List that I'm about to cover. The list is not intended to fully encompass all of the project elements, but instead include minimum requirements that provide interested consultant firms with a framework of what the city is looking for so they know how to respond. A specific scope of work will be established during the contracting phase with the consultant, with the selected consult, consultant. Wow, that was hard for me to get through. Okay, so tasks have been broken down into three main buckets. The first is where we are now, and then what we need, and finally, how do we get there? For where we are now, we will accomplish an inventory of existing public art and annual art programming that's currently done. The consultant will perform an analysis of local art organizations and the arts commissions of neighboring cities for comparison. And then lastly, review the existing art structure of our Arts and Arts Commission and other city planning documents to make sure everything's in communication. What we need will include community outreach to establish a service gap. So we will ask the community what they hope to see in regards to local art, installations, programs, projects, and then determine any goals and objectives that the Arts Commission can use based on that feedback and the results of the background research in task one. The consultant will also create procedures for art installation, programming, and signage so that each project follows the same process and removes the guesswork for commissioners and staff alike. And then lastly, how do we get there? So once we know what needs to be done to meet the needs of the community, we need the consultant to create a plan for how that can be accomplished. And this starts with clearly defined roles and expectations for arts commissioners. So the consultant will create a list of recommended art events, programming, projects, including potential occasions and themes for those projects. And then we also hope to establish a detailed grant and funding strategy for staff to pursue potentially additional dollars outside of the city. And with that, we also will ask for the consultant to create a budget recommendation for what the annual allocation to the Arts Commission should be. And this comparison that will be done to neighboring arts commissions from task one will also assist with rightsizing that budget. And then lastly, there will be a recommendation for staffing levels, what is needed from Arts and Recreation Department in order to fully support the Arts Commission and their programs. The anticipated timeline, if council approves the Request for Proposals tonight, is staff will work with the clerks to publish this as soon as possible, so end of the week or early next week. Then the proposals will be due in late February, giving the firms about a month to respond. Staff will review all the proposals and interview shortlisted firms, if needed, in March. Then we will begin contracting and scope of work negotiations with a selected consultant in April, also meeting with the Arts Commission for their recommendation, which will make us ready to come back to council for your approval of the contract in May. And hopefully, the project's start date will be early summer, giving about nine months to a year for this project to be completed. Brings us to adoption of the final document in spring of 2025. We have prepared a suggested motion for you to consider, which will allow us to release the Request for Proposals. And that is the end. So I will stop sharing and give it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council, any questions? Deputy Mayor Howe?
Thank you for the presentation. I am in support of this and would like to understand, is $75,000 the right amount of money? What research did you guys do to know that that's what's going to give you the right product at the end?
I can take that question. It's been on the budget a couple of times. We've tried to get it in the budget, and it has been removed. And I think initially, we had an allowance of $100,000, and council voted to reduce that to $75,000. So that's what we have. And I suggest at this point, we wait and see what consultants we get, and we start our contract negotiations. And if we find that we're just not going to make it, we'll come back to council. And then you'll have the ability to see what scope you may want to remove or if you want to add some fees at that point.
Councilmember Lamb?
I just had a quick question. How long do you expect this plan to last, like, 10 years or 15 years?
I'll take a stab at that, too. So the goal of this plan is to be a guiding and long-term document. At the same time, it will also be a living document. So there'll be components of it that will work over a 10 or maybe even a longer period, 10-20-year period. But then there will be elements of it that we'll have to keep coming back to and revisiting from time to time.
Great. I just had a couple of comments on the proposal. For, it would be great to have the commission's mission statement and principles in the Request for RFP. And I didn't see a statement that encouraged women and minority-owned businesses to apply. So I would like to see that in there. I think, I believe that that's pretty standard in our RFP requests. Thank you.
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I just had one quick question. Under task two, it specifically calls out a non-statistically valid survey. And I was just curious, is that cost-based or, you know? It specifically mentioned it, so I was curious.
Right, yeah. A statistically valid survey is far more expensive, so, yeah.
Thanks.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, I'm moved to approve the Arts Strategic Plan Request for Proposal and authorize staff to release the documents to solicit submissions.
Second? All right, moved and seconded. Any other discussion about the motion on the floor? Any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Great. Well, thank you so much. We're excited to see you. I don't know, it sounds like spring-ish. You'll come back.
That's right.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right, council. Next up, we have a discussion on specifically our Council Rules of Procedure 2.9.1. All right, Council. Next up, we have a discussion on specifically our Council Rules of Procedure 2.9.1. I think our clerks have a PowerPoint to bring up, and I'm going to pass it off to Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. So the way in which we conduct city business is guided by the Council Rules of Procedure. These rules are adopted by council, and they exist to foster a positive and collaborative environment within our council. And I believe we need to hold ourselves and each other accountable for these rules. I bring up this agenda topic for a violation of Council Rules of Procedure, specifically 2.9.1, personal attacks and negative comments. I'll read the statement. It says, "While policy disagreements are acceptable, council members should refrain from personal attacks or personal negative comments about fellow council members, city staff members, or the city as a whole. Violation of this section may result in an admonishment or other sanction by majority vote of the other members of the council." On October 16th, Councilmember Trine posted the following on the Facebook group Semamish Central. Let me read that post. It says, "The rumors being spread about my wrongdoings are more than misinformation. They are disinformation. This strategy began as soon as Pam Stewart was added to the council to find a way to discredit me and force me off council. And he further continues, 'I am being wrongfully accused, and the existing council members know it, but they continue to spread disinformation.'" This post is a clear violation of 2.9.1, and I bring this up as a discussion topic, as a reprimand of Councilmember Trine. Councilmember Trine specifically calls out Councilmember Stewart and disparages council by accusing us of spreading disinformation. This is Councilmember Trine's second violation. The first violation came before council on March 8, 2022. I will also note that this post violates council's recently adopted Code of Conduct for professionalism, respect, and civility. There were many council members that did not want to put this on the agenda, but I believe that council rules or procedures are only as effective as our enforcement of them. We should not cherry pick which rules we decide to enforce, and if we choose not to enforce our rules, it weakens all our rules. Why would we even have rules at that point? Again, we need to hold ourselves accountable, and we need to hold each other accountable to these rules.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. Council, I would open it up to you if you have any further comments or discussion. I don't, I'm not sure, Councilmember Trine, if your button is still on from the prior motion. Just want to make sure. Okay, yeah. All right, I'm not seeing any hands. Councilmember O'Farrell?
So how do we proceed from here?
This is an open discussion. If there is a motion that somebody would like to offer for action or any discipline, that is up to the council. But as of right now, it is a verbal reprimand from Councilmember Lamb that will be captured in meeting minutes. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I want to just address broadly that I very much agree with Councilmember Lamb, that if we're going to have rules, we need to enforce them consistently, evenly, fairly, for everyone and all the time. And I also think it needs to be done in a very timely manner, so that it's more relevant. So I really appreciate Councilmember Lamb bringing this forward. If we, if we're not comfortable enforcing any of these rules, I think it's really important that we remove them as rules then, because it really creates an inequity for those who try really hard to follow the rules and live by those rules and are bound, you know, feel bound by those rules and then when others are not. So I do appreciate the conversation and the discussion very much. And I feel that way not just about our council rules. Quite honestly, I think that applies to any rules or legislation we pass, any, you know, Semamish municipal code that we have. Our public expects us, if we're going to have codes of conduct and rules, that they be consistently enforced. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Yeah, I mean, I would have to agree with that, and I have to agree with Councilmember Lamb that if we have a rule, what is the point if we're not going to enforce it? So I absolutely hear that. When it says here, "A violation of the section may result in an admonishment or other sanction," do we have, do we have like a list of what does that mean? What are the avenues open? Like, how do we proceed with that? Because I am interested in discussing this and kind of talking about this, I think, because it's come up again, and I think we really do need to address it.
Yes, we have talked a lot over the last few days. I'm going to pass it off to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to remind the council, your Rules of Procedure do set forth potential consequences in Rule 3.4.7. That's on page 11 of the Rules of Procedure. And it does include a listing here. It says, "Additional consequences may include a verbal admonition, written reprimand, censure, expulsion from the meeting at which the conduct is occurring, removal of the council member from the council committee chair positions or committee memberships, or removal of intergovernmental duties." Now, I do want to also note that if you look at the rule at issue 2.9.1, it says that the sanction is by majority vote. So not just one council member can impose a sanction. It has to be a majority vote of the council.
Okay, so that's, that's, that seems clear. So is the, is the next thing that we do after we feel like we've exhausted our discussion, do we put it up for a vote, that we were proceeding on this, the consequences to the breaking of this rule? You know, how do we do that?
You know, I defer to the council on how you want to proceed. I did hear Councilmember Lamb clearly state what her, I guess, desired outcome would be here for a verbal reprimand, so she could perhaps make that motion. If it receives a second, then council can further discuss it and then call for a vote.
Councilmember Stewart, is your hand still up? Or is this a new hand? Awesome, thank you. Yeah, so it is kind of up, you know, like a formal censure, which we had talked about, that requires notice, and that would have to come back as a resolution, so it's not really something we could do this evening. There's a verbal reprimand, which I believe Councilmember Lamb just gave. We could give something maybe a little more clear. The written reprimand, that's where we kind of get into like a squishy area. There's not like an easy template, fill in the blank. And then, of course, there's the stripping of boards, commissions, et cetera.
So am I right in saying then that Councilmember Lamb's statement, that is, that is the verbal reprimand? And then, so if, if, I'm kind of confused. So then, is, is it that if, so do council then say, "We support that reprimand"? I mean, is that it? Is that, is it a done deal? Councilmember Lamb's reprimand, that's it? We move on, it's done? Or, I'm confused as to, because that just seems like that's one person making a statement. Do council then need to say, "We support the statement that Councilmember Lamb made"? Or, I don't really understand how, what's the point?
Well, there's wide latitude, and there's wide latitude in how the council could either approve or essentially ratify the verbal reprimand of Councilmember Lamb. So if someone wanted to make a motion to approve or support it or ratify it, whatever language you want to use, if that receives a second, there could be further discussion and then a vote taken.
Okay, so I move that we support the statement made by Councilmember Lamb in relation to the social media comments made by Councilmember Trine. Second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to that, Councilmember O'Farrell?
I've thought about this quite a bit, because we've talked about it a lot. And I do take the point that what is the point in having this as a reg, as a rule if we're not going to enforce it? And I do think over time, as I've thought about this, that this meets the spirit of this rule, that this particular violation meets that, and I would be supportive of that. I feel like we need to set some ground rules for all of us in how we conduct ourselves at the dais and in the public sphere. And I think it's important that we do that and that the public see that we do that.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
Thank you. For myself, I was one of those people that was reluctant to put it on to the agenda. And the reason being that it was a problematic statement. I did think it crossed the line in terms of decorum. I worry more that it affects council in terms of damaging council. You know, that we actually try to hold ourselves to a high standard, and behaving in that matter, I think, is important for the integrity of the office, for the integrity of the council. But as you also know, I'm very outcome-focused. What I care about is that we move forward and that we're able to work in a collegiate way with trust and respect for each other. And I do think that we are all extremely capable of doing precisely that. So while I'll support this, I am disappointed that this has come up. But I, what I'm hoping is that Councilmember Lamb feels heard and respected and understood in this process.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, could we maybe take down the presentation? Because we can't, at least I can't see you guys. You're all tiny, and I'm not sure the public can see us. I, I wanted to say that I really appreciate, again, Councilmember Lamb bringing this forward. And Deputy Mayor Howe, I very much hear your words as well and our desire to move forward. One of the reasons why I think this is important is because when, when rules are violated and we don't call it out and there's no action taken, then the violations continue. As Councilmember Lamb pointed out, this same topic was discussed in March of 2022. And I think it was you, Deputy Mayor Howe, who said, you know, you were still waiting for that apology from that infraction. And I'm not, I don't know if that ever happened, but certainly I haven't received any apologies for this one. And I do think that there have been times when, when the behaviors have escalated. And I think if we really do want, and I believe we do, I don't really mean if we do, but because we do, because we all believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, part of that is creating safe spaces and modeling good behavior. So I do think we need to all hold each other accountable and call each other out when these violations occur in the hopes that we can continue to move forward without those. And I'll just say, for the record, that I have on several occasions not felt safe in City Hall because of, of personal attacks against me in the building. And that, that isn't, I think, what we really want. So I'm hopeful that we can have this discussion and that we can then move forward and not have to worry about things like that happening in the future. Thank you.
I'm just going to go here. I don't see any other hands. I will say, I approved this on the agenda in pretty much the 11th hour. I will say that no council member was willing to put it in writing, except for Councilmember Lamb, to approve this and put this on the agenda, so I think that says a lot there. I know this was brought up before Councilmember Gupta was on council, when we had Councilmember Nupure on, and rightfully so, you know, she punted it to this next council, which I think is probably the right move. I probably would have done the same thing. What I will say is, like Deputy Mayor Howe, I definitely am super interested in the outcome of this, outcome-driven. What's our next steps? How are we going to get through this? And I want to have a successful year, a successful retreat, et cetera. So while I do understand, and I do understand what Councilmember Lamb is saying, it is, it's a difficult spot. I think also this bumps up against some other things. You know, when you're in campaign mode, there is a lot of emotions and a lot of different charge. And whether you're speaking as an incumbent council member or as a person running for office, there's just a really fine line there. And yeah, this is just a difficult one. So I will support verbally this, I guess, verbal reprimand. I'm not sure what we're really calling it. But I, too, am not, yeah, I just hope we can get through something for this year. So if there's no other questions or comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was that seven zero or six zero? Councilmember Trine? So I believe, can you abstain from a vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next up, we have city manager report. Yes, Councilmember Stewart?
I'm sorry, but I believe that our council rules state that if you don't have, there's a specific set of reasons to abstain, and so if you don't, if you're abstaining and it isn't for one of those reasons, then I believe your vote is counted in the affirmative. But I'd have to double-check the rule. But I think, like, you can only abstain if you have, like, a conflict of interest or something like that.
To be honest, I didn't abstain. I made no comment. So you can take it as you want.
I'm letting our city attorney.
So.
She's thumbing through now.
Under our council rules in Section 5 Voting on Page 17 in 5.5 Abstentions, it says, "Each council member shall vote on all questions put to the council unless a conflict of interest or other disqualifying matter under state law is present. Unless a member of the council states that they are abstaining for the above reasons, their silence shall be recorded as an affirmative vote."
Thank you.
So a no comment counts as not that.
It counts as an affirmative vote unless you want to register a no vote.
I'd like to move forward without being bullied and intimidated all the time, so I think this is one way to do that. So I'll vote in favor.
In favor, seven zero. Thank you, Councilmember Trine. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of, that we have still have one more agenda item, I don't have anything pressing for tonight. Thank you.
All right, are there any verbal council reports? I don't think I saw any written or submitted. Sorry, I see you. Deputy Mayor Howe?
Just, there was an ETP meeting just recently, and what I wanted to mention about the Eastside Transportation Partnership is that I will be asking you for your opinion on this. I'd like to bring forward a discussion around the topics of e-bikes and safety protocols and taking, reviewing other cities' safety protocols. I know enforcement is problematic, but I think it's a topic that the ETP should undertake and take a look at, maybe to help provide some guidance around this, because I'm, I know I am concerned around this.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Howe. I think that's a great topic. And I believe I had a conversation with the city manager and city attorney about this, looking into some of the details around, like, when is an e-bike considered a bike? And when is it considered a motor vehicle? Is there like a speed threshold or things like that? So I think there are a lot of, a lot of areas here where we have to talk about that and understand when we would, you know, potentially need to require e-bikes to not be in a bike lane but on the roadway, et cetera. So really appreciate you bringing that up. I think it's also something that we probably need addressed at the state level, so maybe the ETP could come up with some recommendations that we could then pass on to our state legislatures to make it more consistent across, across the state. Thanks. Thanks for bringing that up.
All right, I'm not seeing other hands for verbal council reports. So next up, we have a closed session for collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to RCW 42.30.140.4B. And we are not required to give a time. Yeah, would we like to give one out of respect?
Is the meeting considered adjourned once this concludes? I believe so, because you don't have anything else on your agenda.
So we don't have to come back and make a motion to adjourn? So we don't have to come back and make a motion to adjourn?
If, if that's the council's choice, yes.
Yeah, we're just going to leave.
Okay.
Yeah, after this. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.